You are watching Access to Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 23 meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessesaportcounty.org.
Is this in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the free and stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to change things up just a little bit with a presentation to a special guest, the Port County Prosecutor Sean Fagan. So Sean, if you could approach the podium, we'll have our town marshal Steve Dick approach with you there.
Okay, so all aware? Last year, I approached Mr. Fagan with the idea of him providing us with funding for some radar sites, pole-mounted radar sites, which he graciously agreed. We, with the help of the street department, did an amazing job, had them installed, and they are already working wonders. We're seeing a lot of brake lights, and it's a very good investment, in my opinion. Having said that, we'd like to present Mr. Fagan with a plaque. I'm going to read this to you. Presented to the Port County Prosecuting Attorney Sean Fagan, through your generous donation of four pole-mounted radar signs to the Trail Creek Police Department, your commitment to investing in our department provides us with tools to make our roads and our community safer. We value your partnership and look forward to continued success in fighting crime. Presented this 23rd day of January 2024. Mr. Fagan, thank you very much. We will be doing that. I'll get that fixed. Because it was given out of friendship and love, that's what it is. Good enough, that's what it was. And it doesn't stop there. We had a meeting last week with Mr. Fagan and all of the administrations from all the departments. Mr. Fagan said something, and it burnt my interest, and I approached him again about four more signs, of which he has agreed, and we will be getting four more signs this year that we're in the process of getting, and get the street department to get them installed once the weather breaks. So we want to thank Mr. Fagan, and we'll have him back to thank him again for those additional four signs.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
And if I can for just a moment, if I can ask our street department commissioner to take a picture of our town marshal and Mr. Fagan, maybe out in the foyer area, so we can have a photo for our social media website or with a press release. Thank you. Moving back to our regular agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the December 2023 meeting. Those were delivered to everybody, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to review them.
I move to approve the minutes from the December 19, 2023 meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries. Approval of the under report, which should also be in your packet.
Make abortions acceptable on the first.
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, motion carry. Everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing yes, approval, motion carries. And moving on to the accounts payable, payment of the bills.
It's the same amount.
Because it's reported. It's just not.
Oh, right.
No, like abortion.
Thank you, Warren, and a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Crystal, do we have any correspondence this month? Any letters from any?
Other than what Willoughby is going to be addressing?
Okay. Nothing, thank you.
Chris isn't here tonight.
Chris is not here this evening. However, for MS4, we do have a copy of a new contract for this year from Global Land Surveying. They would like to continue assisting us with MS4 compliance. So their contract is in your packet. The total this year that they're proposing is not to exceed $12,000 for their fee. They actually expect it to be significantly less than that because the bulk of the work was done last year. So I know our attorney, excuse me, reviewed this and said he approves of this contract. Do you have any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the contract as presented by Global Land Surveying for MS4 services.
I move to approve the contract by Global Engineering and Land Surveying for MS4.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. If all in favor, would say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries. Since our attorney could not make it this evening, he did send out a short report, and the information he had to relay was as such. At 235 Harding, he is subject to, it's so good. Thank you. 235 Harding is subject to a transfer of ownership as a result of a tax sale. He is reaching out to the new owner right now. At 110 Harding, he is in contact with the new owner of the property and is hopeful that we'll see some progress. And then on the contract for the town hall project, he says that is a standard AIA form and is generally acceptable. His suggestion for the council is that we approve it this evening as to form and authorize us to sign it, subject to correction of the dates of the project. And if we have any questions, he welcomes the council to contact him. So that would be our attorney's report for this evening. Moving on to our town engineer.
I know that San Jose has been working with Crystal about finalizing the CCMG project. I understand that the underrun truck has consent. That's basically, your kid asks you for a dollar, and you'll get a candy bar, it costs 90 cents, so you want your 10 cents back. So that's basically what that's for. So we're following up on that. End dot should be issuing a close of a project email to Crystal, probably. And when you do get that, we just ask you to give us a copy so we can finalize our project, too.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Wow, okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And that brings up our police department.
Good evening. I know we got a couple of things. One was, Mr. Fagan, you kind of provided there, we offered to purchase four more radar signs. I went to the partner of Sergeant Corpano. We had a deposition a couple of weeks ago here in Trail Creek, an older gentleman, and he was called there, performed lifesaving measures, and unfortunately, obviously it was unsuccessful. However, when the deputy coroner arrived, one of the things he noticed was how Sergeant Corpano was dealing with the family and dealing with the scene in general, so much that he called me last Saturday on his day off, because he kept forgetting to call me to pass along his appreciation for how he handled this as professionals in that manner. So it was all verbal, I had nothing written, but I wanted to pass that along to you. Lastly, I just want to thank the street department. I think they've been doing a great job to do some of the things they've been facing, Dave and I, on a regular basis, and kind of did a phenomenal job, given, you know, what transpired, and a lot of people aren't happy. That's, you know, in a snow belt, that's going to happen, you know, from our perspective. It was amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, you have any questions for me?
No.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
And our street department is up next.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Well, basically, this last storm, last couple of weekends, actually, it was not going to be any challenges. I sent out an email, I hope everybody got that, and copies of what I sent out as far as an update status of what we went through, trying to keep the trucks and the equipment on the road, and at times, left very limited manpower occasionally, considering the jobs that a couple of our folks work full-time elsewhere. That said, when we started this last Thursday with the storm, you guys now know, but the citizens may not know this, one of our trucks was down, had a pretty bad failure on one of the parks. So that went down, and it was in Maryville being repaired. They put us in front of the list, Leno did, to get this truck back, knowing that we were in that storm. While they didn't get in Maryville, we were getting here. But we got it a little bit earlier than expected, in the wee hours of Friday, Friday morning, and I didn't have that truck back until Friday, roughly about noon, 11:30, I think they called to come pick it up, so it took a couple of hours to get through it. There we had, at that point, one plow truck that you guys usually see out on the road with the salt spread and everything, and two small ones, 2500 V-blades, and the miller that were out, trying to keep up with the storm. We did end up getting that truck back, 35, it's fixed. We've had a few other issues with the hydro lines, and some of the people stepped up, Ryan Miller, Dean and that's been huge this last Sunday morning, agreed to get somebody in to help me get a couple of hoses that were blowing on these trucks and causing us issues. Those issues have been, I think, figured out, and those hoses being rerouted, and it should be working out really well right now. So as far as the plowing, as Steve mentioned, a couple complaints as far as, one of the things I've heard mostly was widening the roads. The storm hit Thursday night, Friday morning. Trash pickup is Friday. That's a whole other issue, that's not my thing, ordinance handling that part, but if you can imagine, this is it, and we're getting about a foot by the time before you move them, you know, out there, we're trying to clear that out. Streets are lined with garbage cans, recycled bins, you name it, behind that. So that's caused the problem, it's been a problem, a lot of people still having their stuff out, they've left it out, whether it was intentional, or they just don't want to dig it out, or whatever the case is, but by doing that, we're limited on how far we can move without going out, actually moving everybody's garbage can back up in their driveway or something to widen those roads to get what we would like for them to be at. Besides that, residents need to understand that digging out to your garbage can, that you have set out the road, about three, four feet into the roadway, and then parking your car right at the very end of your dig out, it doesn't help either. We can't do anything with that either. Everybody, I would think, knows that, and so we can't widen those roads. So I understand, I don't want to do any more digging at my house, and I have to get that end of the roadway done, my driveway open, but it is what it is. Those roads have to be open for emergency personnel, that's what we're focusing on. So, aside from that, salt, salt delivery, we've had a delivery of salt Monday, 40 ton we received in, we have about another 80 ton we can purchase if we need to, or order, it's on the contract. So just so everybody's aware of that. Short of that, any questions?
Any questions from anyone, any comments from anyone?
No, you guys are doing good. You're dealing with machinery, you're dealing with personnel, you're dealing with mother nature. You guys are great, you know, and for individuals that don't recognize that, yes, the cars, particularly, you know, they're right at the edge of the snow, oh, okay, what are you supposed to do about it? They don't get it out, get their ice coming down the road, I just saw, I was like, to get them out of the way, or get them in the driveway, allows you guys to go through. So it's like, you know, the kind of common sense, but, oh, great. I appreciate it.
And I want to go, Warren, thank you so much for the great job you've done with all the challenges you faced, and with a foot of snow falling, no, 36 inches of snow falling over what, a 24 to 48 hour period, limited personnel, limited equipment, I mean, all the things that were thrown at you all at once, phenomenal job. And now this week, you're focused on opening storm drains, from what I understand.
Yes, and I spoke to your, so the citizens know, or residents know, we started this morning, Mike was out, trying to, well, we know a lot tomorrow that are still the ones hiding. People that live near one of those storm drains, it'd be great if you got there, try to dig that out, it's going to help you with the flooding, potential flooding, given the meltdown and rain and everything all happening now, that's all at once. Yeah, just try to help us out, call the office, we'll get somebody out there, get that cleared out, call me, let me know. But yes, we're working that tomorrow, planning to attack that first thing in the morning. That's, I guess, we started this morning, but.
And I'll try to even get my own cleared off, so, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, you did a great job. Thanks.
All right, moving on to our park department this evening.
I would also like to say, thanks to you, I saw you guys come down the road four or five times as much as you could, and I think you guys suck, actually, so I was like, I'm not going out to show you guys out. I saw the lights, I was like, you guys are on your own, sorry. Okay, so we kind of had our meeting two weeks ago, right before the storm, just kind of go over reorganizational, just because with where our accounts are at, we finished the year with nobody, so we did great, I think. So I was going to say, some of the things that we talked about were just kind of reorganization as far as our board. I was going to say, I was elected, re-elected president for this upcoming year. I have a new vice president, it's going to be Katrina, who was already on the board before, and then all of our board members are staying the same. We do have one, and I don't know, that is not 100% healthy, so I don't know if it's possible, if we should be looking at an alternate, but I was going to say, almost all of our, we usually have at least three members. I get into a little difficulty when I have less than three, when I only have three members, if we do have to walk on something, so I don't know if that's something I should consider, just because I'm not sure if Jim, who was my vice president this last year, will be able to be at a lot of our meetings. I know that one of my other board members has hit or missed as far as her health as well, so I don't know how many members we're allowed to have on our board.
So it's, believe my ordinance, you have as many as you can right now, what's the five? You do need to find out if they plan to stay on the board or not?
They, Jim kind of left it with me, as far as, I know that one is, Jim kind of left it with me, as far as, he will try to be there as much as he can, but he has missed a majority of our meetings last year, and he was my vice president, so luckily I had others to step in, and it was one of those things where I called him and had a personal conversation, and it was just, I do not have the authority to remove him, and that was a choice that was his to have, if his longest he was able, we were happy to have him, but I do worry because it is a little serious, you know, we should consider, if there is a way to consider an alternate, we'll just have to have a reelection at some point when he is not able to.
So if he does decide to resign, then we would open that up to the public and ask for volunteers from the town?
Okay, because I know that my vice president was worried, so. The swing sets, we have a new swing set coming into Nelson, I know we talked about this at length, it was supposed to be delivered February 2nd. I don't think that's going to happen with the current weather conditions. I do know that we need to talk to Playworks as far as what he plans on having that delivered, but I did want to come to the board and ask for authorization to call NISCO to have, because they need to check the lines as far as where they can dig before we can put the new, install the new swing set, and so I needed to ask you guys' permission to see if I can call, or if I call 811 number.
Yeah, it's, yeah, 811, it doesn't cost anything.
I don't think that you need our permission to do that part of it. The only thing that I question is, you know, the delivery date, where it's going to be stored until it's installed, and how that, that's a very gross size, as planned out.
It's about a 36-foot swing set, it's pretty large, it's a pretty large swing set. I was going to say, I don't know if, I was going to, Crystal, if you can help me out on this, you talked to Gary, I don't know if he had.
Yeah, he pretty much said that they'll just keep it, so we're ready.
Yeah, I was going to say, that was my understanding, is we just call him and he'll have it brought out. We kind of skipped on delivery fees on our budget, just, and he's personally delivering it, so that kind of saved us a little bit of money there, because otherwise it was like $1,200 to have it delivered, and so, yeah. So he's personally bringing it out to us, which was a great help, and so I'd like to definitely mention that we appreciate his help throughout all of his working with us, with checks, things like that.
And as far as the installation, you have a company already lined up to do that part?
The Playworks, as far as I know, they're taking care of all of it today, they're taking care of everything that goes with the swing set, minus the mulch, which I will talk to the street department about that, when that time comes, we'll learn more about those.
And that's every spring, so that's.
Yeah, we're not struggling. So I was going to say, after that, I was going to say, it's the removal of the old swing set, which we've also talked about in our meetings at length. To remove the one at Nelson, it's about $2,520 to remove that old swing set. I know that we've talked about contacting a scrapping company to see if they're interested in taking it. It is also the removal of the swing set, which we have to get an excavator in, because I know our street part of it is like, no, thank you, we don't want any part of that. So I was going to say, I'm not blaming for that, but.
And quite honestly, they have enough on their side.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't worry for that, I know that they don't work for us, unfortunately, you know, you know how much that work is to move all your stuff. So I was going to say, that is, so I was going to say, 2520 is what we're looking at, to have the swing set removed from Nelson, the old swing sets, which I would like to have done before the Centennial celebration that we have upcoming this year.
Right, do you have a date planned for that?
Yes, that is coming up. I was going to say, we also.
Before you go to that point, let's find out how, you know, what their scheduling looks like for the spring, because we're obviously going to have to wait for the ground to thaw before that can be installed, and probably removed at the same time.
Okay, I was going to say, and then we also have to look at removal of the swing set over here at Condon, and that is $1,680. So it is not cheap.
Do we have a piece of equipment to replace that one?
No, not yet, so we're not worried about it yet, but we were giving the numbers at the same time, and I just liked, because that'll be next, the swing set over here will be next on my list, since we got the bigger swing set at Nelson. Okay, so that leads into the Centennial celebration. We picked a date, we, as you said, that we could, we are looking at Saturday, June 22nd. I know a lot of you might recognize that date for being the Old Queens Fest, we kind of thought it was going to be a nice kind of like kickoff into the summer for everybody. We're looking at using probably majority Nelson Park, but we also are going to maybe do a dodgeball tournament over here at Condon. So we got some ideas set up, but we know that sponsorships are going to be heavily needed for that, so that's kind of where we're, that's kind of what our next few meetings are about, are finding out about insurance. I'd like a beer tent, I don't care, I want one. I was going to say, I don't know if we can have one, but I want one. But I was going to say, some of the things like that, dodgeball tournament, activities, crafts, very similar to what we have for the Fall Festival, just on a larger scale for the town. And I was going to say, like I said, we would like to figure out some way to use both parks, since they're not that far from each other, and maybe have a 5K to kind of kick it off that morning. So those are some of our ideas for the Centennial, we are still kind of trying to figure out where we even start with that, but prior to that event, we have another event coming up on the 11th, and it's going to call, it's called Pups and Posies.
Is it June 11?
No, May 11, I'm sorry, right before Mother's Day, the day before Mother's Day, Saturday, and it's going to be at Pritz Park, and that is kind of going to be like the grand reopening we're hoping to do, because I know that he was big, Mr. Pritz was big on having a grand reopening, and so we thought this would be kind of a cool way to do, to show people, re-show, you know, show people the park, we have little shirts, we're going to have little shirts for sale, and we're kind of hoping that selling the shirts, having some vendors maybe at that one, so we're going to have, we're looking at getting bulbs or plants in, and having the kids come out and decorate, like pots for their moms, since it's the day before Mother's Day, and maybe trying to charge for the pots. I don't know if, again, the legality behind this, but all of that will help us fundraise for the Centennial celebration, so we are not hitting our budget. And that's really with the Centennial, that's where we're going to have this year, is just finding ways to fundraise so I can get this old equipment out, and get the Centennial, and then look at what we can step forward with this next year, on top of, we're going to, looking at a community event, I don't have a date for that solidified, as far as maybe a park cleanup, so if the community wants to come out and help us clean up, I know that we have to get some of the concession stands kind of cleaned up, the parks, just check, you know, just general upkeep on things, because I only have five members, and I can't do it all by myself, unfortunately. But yeah, so that's kind of, that's kind of what we have going on. I was going to say, I wanted to talk to the board about the Pups and Posies event before we put, announce that on Facebook, but that'll be like a 12 to 4 event at Pritz Park, the day before Mother's Day, so.
Okay. Question for you, are you thinking about the Fall Festival and a date for that potentially at this point?
We are not looking at the Fall Festival, honestly, we kind of, kind of want to see how much fundraising we can do for the Centennial celebration, because honestly, the Fall Festival is only four months later. As much as I would like to do the Fall Festival, if it's not doable this year, just due to our budget, and if we can't fundraise or find the sponsors, unfortunately, I think if we do the Centennial celebration, we've done a good job for the town, and the kind of board is kind of agreeing with that, but if we are able to do it, we will definitely do it. I mean, I'm not going to say no at this point, it's just, we got, the Centennial is kind of our big focus right now. And then getting the swing set in. And all the other buttons, there we go.
Okay.
So I was going to say, for the Centennial celebration, like I said, Saturday, June 22nd, we're looking at a possible 5K, kind of kick started off, but we're looking from like a 12 p.m. to 10 p.m. kind of thing. So I was going to say, again, I have to figure out the insurance behind it, and talk to current Mr. Willoughby, Attorney Willoughby about that, as far as the legality behind the things that I can and cannot do there, but that's kind of what we were thinking as of that.
So the only other thing that you want to think about is the St. Stan's 5K, which is on June 2nd, so you're going to be following right behind that.
Run anywhere, I'm not one of them, but I was going to say, we just kind of wanted to speak to you, there probably wasn't going to be anything, I know that we've been looking at the Shins City calendar of events, to kind of, but that's why we chose the Queens Fest weekend, know that there are no longer carrying that, and hoping that maybe that's something that we can kind of bring people to.
Perfect, all right.
So, and then, I know, I'm sorry, I know that we also need to, maybe a liaison now, now that.
We will reappoint that later.
Perfect, okay. That's everything I've got, and if you have any questions or concerns.
No, thank you, that's a lot. Because you could do it a whole lot.
Oh, we could do a lot.
And next up, we have our building inspector. She did take all of your.
Thank you, sir. Actually, like most junior residents, not a lot to report.
Okay.
And this, this time, Marcella, was because of the cold, the snow.
Thank you. Anything for planning and zoning this evening? And anything for NERC see? Crystal, did they contact you, or did you contact them to change the, our board, it's on our board appointment yet? Okay, we'll take care of that, though. All right, moving on to old business, we have the town hall renovation, and Warren, I'm going to give you the floor.
Yeah, it's a quarter.
I'm going to give you the floor.
I hear it, I'm weak, bro. Way to stop talking.
Yeah.
If you can.
It's, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Great.
We're ready.
Regarding the renovation, we have a contract, and we have it in front of us. As mentioned earlier, the, we just need to approve the price, and we can move forward, Tristan, review the whole thing, and everything is in line. That being said, that we, the contract, I've been in contact with Holiday, and their recommendation, the suggestions are to wait till April 1st to be the break ground, I guess you want to say, and that would help with the winter fees, because if we started, say hypothetically, right now, there could potentially be winter fees added on top of that, which is typical for construction. That being said, that was like, you estimate like another $10,000 if we started now, so their subcontractors are willing to hold the price, so everything is actually good. We just need to tell them, yes, that's fine, April 1st, and then from that point on, we all need to decide what the plan of attack would be, to go in stages, or renovate the whole thing at one time, so.
And have you talked to him about that portion of it?
Yep, and what would happen is that we went in stages, stages meaning two stages, let's call it, they would start in the back room first and get that done, and then while they're doing that, this half the building would still be, it would be occupied, and utilities are still be functioning. Once they get done with that half, then they come over here, and that's the point in time where everything has to get out, and, and the clerk and.
And so, if I go over here, you mean everything on this side?
This side of the wall.
So the garage area would be the first phase, okay.
Yeah, so it all depends upon how you all want to handle it, as far as, it's not my office, but, what's that?
Can we decide that part later?
We can, yeah. Yeah, and to go in two stages, it'll be, he's estimated, it might take a little bit longer, about like a month longer.
What the cost anymore.
Nope. Nope, no extra money on all this, so, just a matter of us getting it all coordinated.
Okay. That being said, we need a motion to approve the contract as presented this evening, so some of them would like to. So if someone would like to make that motion, we can start to proceed.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Lauren and Pete, and any further question or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And so the time when you're recommending is starting on April first?
It's first, yeah. That means that we have the, the back room, we have to, where we have to have all the ducks in a row here, we have to get the back room cleared by one.
And I think that gives us a nice amount of time to be able to change that as well.
Yep.
So, is everyone here okay with April first? Crystal?
It's really gonna affect her the most, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Saves from all of the huge payments coming in.
Okay. So, we'll put it on April first for a start date, so Lauren, if you'll let them know that, we'll sign the contract this evening. Yeah, it gives you time to get everything in order here as well. And then if you would like to discuss with Penny, how the two of you think it would be best to proceed if you want to do the building in phases. Please consider all the noise and the dust and everything else that will be coming into play with that, and then we can move forward from there.
Absolutely.
And then if you'll talk to Lauren about that part. The town signage update. Again, Lauren, this is, this is yours.
Yep. Just for everybody's, uh, update, we are looking to, um, update, I guess you wanna say, our welcome signs that are around Trail Break. And, uh, so I started out with the high school. They're working with, uh, with their graphics art class, and coming up with different designs. I've sent some of those out. Uh, you can pass that one around. Got some ideas. And then, this was another idea. That's kind of like what's out there a little bit, but just a little bit of a change. And this is just a blow up of the one that's already out there. So I'd be seeing a bit of some interest.
I also like that one, too.
I like the shape of this, I'm not sure, like the fish.
The fish.
The, uh, the given idea, in case you're wondering, on cost, uh, this is an estimate on, uh, on the blue one that's going around. Just to give you an idea, uh, the signs are four by four. And I, uh, it's a exterior, it's an outside sign material, combination of plastic and metal.
So is it kind of with the same signs we have done at Pritz Park?
Don't know.
Because we just have the same company, we provide the cards, so it's as well.
Probably that.
So, and they, they weather very nicely, but the Max metal is. So those weather really well, the fading is, is minimal on those. Um, and if you wanted to see an example of it, you could drive by their offices on Schen Boulevard. Uh, their signage out in front is actually that same material, and they've been out there for a while. So, it's, it's a nice durable material on that sign.
That is.
Oh, it's right there.
I just got that there.
That is, um, uh, we do, we will install too.
I was gonna ask if that includes the posts, or if we use the extent.
Our posts.
Our posts that we already have installed, so keeping it the same size, maybe?
Well, we probably put new posts, too, they're kind of riled away.
Oh.
They need to be.
Yeah, they're pretty bad.
So, yeah, it's our installation, they're, just their material.
Okay.
To get you an idea, and, you know, I get, I don't know if it says on the quote when, how long it's gonna take them, but they're pretty quick, so.
They're.
We got a little time, but we wanna coordinate with, with the, uh, Centennial program, I expect to have it done by then, I guess you wanna say. And we're talking about five now. Steven, I don't know if we're talking about doing more around the town.
We talked about seven.
Okay.
So we may add two more to this, maybe they can, we can ask if they would lower the price from a higher quantity. Um, and then the street department would have to be involved in the installation of those signs, and we'd have to coordinate that around spring leaf pickup and cleanup. So, just some things to keep in mind as we're moving forward.
He's getting it.
As we're moving forward.
After the regular signs and after the mulch.
Yeah.
Right, and then we've got, we've got a mind off of the air, so.
No worries.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on the signage?
Just let me know which direction you want. You want the blue one or?
Because I don't have a preference on the sign. I like this, but I don't like the fish.
Blue one's nice.
I do like this blue one.
Do we wanna, if we do the blue?
Just remember the spellings.
Yeah, we remember the spellings wrong. Register, yeah. Register.
Yeah, and I could, we could add, uh.
But I like the blue one, because it's colorful.
Yeah, I could add that to the bottom of that.
Is it really, like, some?
Could we do this in blue?
I don't know, I can ask.
What if we did this in blue?
Four by four.
Four by four, of the grid here.
We're gonna do the same sign, only the parts. This would be easier cutting it out. This would be probably more expensive.
Yeah.
More expensive.
Because of all the different cuts.
Oh.
So, this would be more expensive because of all the cuts.
Probably.
I guarantee it. This is.
Give you a price somehow, it's gonna be a bump up on a little bit.
Yeah, because of the multiple cuts they have to do. Um, this will be a less expensive sign because of the, so a more physically responsible sign. And then if we could put this line at the bottom, that could be on its own separate bumper, and then just make sure that they correct that sign. So is everyone okay with this design? Someone else? Okay. Event shall be good.
Uh, twenty.
All right, and then we'll need, um, if you can bring us back pricing next month on that, so we can, we can figure that out. Do we want to vote on a not to exceed this evening? For that signage? Because if you're looking at seven signs at, uh, two hundred and sixty.
Eleven eighty-five, sixty.
Yeah.
So a not to exceed, if we did, I would say twelve hundred dollars. So, if we did enough to exceed one thousand two hundred dollars for a total of seven signs, then we could make that motion and vote on that this evening, so that we can move forward with the project. Does that sound okay? Yes?
Sounds good to me.
All right, I'll make the motion to not to exceed twelve hundred dollars for the five to seven signs that we'll be having made for the town.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have golf carts again. So I know that we've talked about this, and talked about this, and talked about this. Is this something that the board wants to explore, or do we want to leave this as it is, and not keep golf carts? I know we've already had one community member who's expressed his displeasure with the idea of having golf carts. The idea of, um, the safety was, was the biggest factor for him. If we did consider this, we would have to really do some significant work on ordinance, uh, regulating this, and it would cause a significant amount of work for our police force, potentially, uh, making sure that people who are in town that had the golf carts, had them properly registered, had appropriate drivers in them, and didn't have them on the busier streets within our town. So it could potentially be a lot of work, I'm not saying that it's not possible. There are safety concerns that have already been, um, expressed.
I don't see it to be, uh, practical for us, uh, particularly we got Johnson Road, close spring greenwood.
Risking.
They'll be all, yeah, they'll be.
And pine trees.
The speeds, uh, or just be as, the safe condition.
And I would agree with that, I.
I would agree with that.
I think my concern is that I've already seen throughout T-ball and baseball seasons how people drive just through this neighborhood alone, and through the area around Nelson Park. Um, and those aren't busier streets typically. So, that alone, just the way that people tend to, um, drive in, in side streets concerns me, even for the golf carts. Any other comments from the council? Okay. So I think that we should, um.
Move to table the golf cart.
Concept.
Or concept or conversation, indefinitely.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we will move that. Um, and I will get back in contact with the home gentleman who would wanted us to address that. The employee handbook, and I have that on our old business, because we started that, um, with our, some of our council members are no longer with us. We need to finish that project and wrap that up. Our, our handbook has been significantly out of date for some time. But now that, you know, we're, we're all in place, let's get this together. So, if we can schedule a date this evening, um, when we can get that put together, that would be great. Although I know that we'll need to contact our vendors, doll. So, um, if you can, if everyone, is there a, a ninety-eight percent?
When you say put together, like, we all need copies of it, and then go through it ourselves, and you know?
Right. So we have, we should have copies of it already. And if not, then I will make sure that everyone's providing copies, and what I have that is as updated as possible.
Yeah, because I would have one.
Yes, I would know that we need to get one for you and Chris, for sure. Um, we do have a vendor that we were working with on that project already, so we would make sure that she has everything as up to date as we do as well.
There are a couple of things that still need to be finalized, I thought, yeah.
And some of that, Chris, will need to work on for us, some of it she'll need to work on for us, and so. Are there any nights of the week that work best for anyone?
No, but I'm just, uh, I'm just, my thought is that we, if we had it on hand right now, uh, and it would give us time, uh, some can have more time to review than others. But if we, uh, say target, uh, maybe the week before the next meeting?
That was exactly my thought.
We could be there, and just have to be our first kickoff on that, and let's just see what we come up with. Everybody by that time should have notes and.
Correct.
Whatever, and then we go.
So I was looking at the week of the twelfth.
Sure.
Does that week work for everyone?
A federal term.
You're funny.
One day.
We can do that any day, look, if you want, I will contact the vendor first.
Try Tuesday.
Tuesday's bad for me.
And Wednesday, it will be bad for a lot of people.
Yep.
So we will be looking at that Monday, then, the twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay. So let me contact our vendor to see if that works for her, and then I'll get back to everybody.
The time.
So, if we can do six PM, that would be.
Six.
Does it work with everyone's schedule? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay. And that is your employee handbook for now. Uh, moving on to new business, we need to make some appointments, so, um, I know I have the street commissioner listed first, but I'm gonna bump that down so that we can do our council president and vice president first. So we'll switch that around just a little bit. So we'll open the floor for nominations for council president.
I move to nominate, re-elect, uh, Ginny Heath as our council president.
Second.
I second.
And I'll, I'll accept the nomination, so now we'll open the floor for, for a formal motion.
Okay.
Unless everyone has any other nominations.
No.
All right, hearing none, we can open the floor for a formal motion.
I move to re-elect Ginny Heath.
I second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, and we'll open nominations for council vice president. I will return the favor and nominate Mr. Pizarro as the vice president. Any other nominations?
I'll accept the nomination.
Thank you. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Mr. Pizarro as the council VP?
Make a motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving back now to our street commissioner's, um, position. We have, I have spoken with Mr. Baker, Dave Baker, who has agreed to, um, retain the position of street commissioner. Um, I think personally, he's done an excellent job, so I will ask for a, um, motion to approve Dave Baker as our street commissioner.
I move to approve Steve Baker, Dave Baker, as our street commissioner.
I second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. And congratulations, Dave. We're glad to keep you on board. We also need to reappoint our town attorney, our engineer, and then go on to board liaisons, so, is everyone in approval with retaining Chris Willoughby as our town attorney again this year?
Can, can we do them both at the same time?
We can.
I, I make a motion to reappoint our town attorney as Chris Willoughby, and our town engineer as, uh, Hassan Associates.
And the second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed?
I wasn't asked.
Hearing none opposed, motion carries. So thank you for your service, but why they have to get back again, then, let's do this next year. Uh, we need to approve from our council, a board liaison for the park board, for the police department, for planning and zoning, and then for NERC C. So, for the park board, um, do we have anyone who is interested in working with the park board?
Please.
Anyone who lives near a park that might be interested in. In being a park board liaison.
I would, I would.
You would like to do that, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Doing parks.
All right. Any others that would, could, that would be opposed to that? Okay, can we have a motion to approve Laura as the park board liaison?
I move to approve Laura Sands as the park board liaison.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. And how about the police department? Do we have anyone who would like to be a liaison to the police department? Do we have anyone who would like to be a liaison to the police department? If not, then I will nominate Warren as our liaison to the police department. Any other nominations?
It's a nominee.
More suggestions?
It's a...
Hearing none, do I have a motion to appoint Warren as our liaison to the police commission or police department commission?
I nominate, or I...
Your motion, make that motion. Thank you, Laura. And a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And planning and zoning, do we have anyone who would like to volunteer?
Yeah, I'll volunteer to stay on that.
Okay. And do we have a motion to approve Mr. Pizarro as the zoning and planning liaison?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And for NERC, typically we would have our town clerk go to that. So Crystal, would you be willing to accept that nomination as the NERC liaison?
Yes.
Thank you. All in...
I move to have Crystal Ferber as our liaison to the NERC board.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, if it signifies...
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then our board appointments for the year, if we can do one motion to approve to retain all the boards as they stand, I think that would be appreciated in the interest of time.
I move to retain all the boards as they stand.
I second.
The only comment that I'll make with that is that we will need to contact the boards individually, every board, with the exception of the park board, needs to have an organizational meeting. Please keep in mind that as a liaison, you don't have a vote on those boards, so we are just there in order to relay information back and forth. But we will need to contact those, the board members, or at least the board presidents there to make sure that they've had an organizational meeting for this year. That being said, the motion is on the floor to retain all of the boards as they stand. Do we...
I'll second it.
Yes, I'll second it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that motion carries. All right, moving on to public comment. Do we have any public comments?
I'm sorry, Crystal, two seconds. I still have to present John Dudek as my, because you've actually appointed him, I do.
Oh, okay. So you would like John Dudek to retain his position?
He agrees to retain his position as my appointment to the police advisory board.
Okay, so our Tom Marshall has chosen his appointment to the board. Do we have a motion to approve his appointment?
I move to approve Marshall Dick's appointment to the advisory, police advisory board.
So that would be John Dudek, it's spelled D-U-D-E-K, correct?
Yes.
All right, and we need a second?
Second.
Laura, we'll give that one to you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now moving on to public comment.
Thanks, Lee, appreciate it. Hi, so Chris and Laura, I direct the St. San Five K. I know there's a couple of new faces here, but...
Nice to see you again.
And so I, last month, I actually approached you guys to get approval for the 5K to start at Moose Lodge instead of Nelson Park and then follow the same route. So I was able to meet with Steve and talk to him about it. We met up at the Moose, we took a look at where we would have it start and finish, and he said that it's fine for them to block off that portion of the route just for that short amount of time. The only thing that he asked that I do is approach the homeowners in that area and just let them know like, hey, you know, this is going to happen, that it will only be closed from this time to this time. So I do plan to do that about a month before the racer, so just to let them know like, hey, play around, you know, play around this time. So I believe you said it would be closed to Black Oak?
Yeah, well, no, it would be, and you forgot one step.
Oh.
Request the closure.
Oh, request.
Because it has to be requested by the, someone, I'm not sure who, but if it's council or one of the boards, but close wellnuts between Johnson and...
Black Oak.
No, the first one.
Green Tree.
Green Tree.
Okay.
Green Tree, and then the side street just down to...
That's...
But regardless, those are the amount that we presented for closure, letting all the residents in that zone know that it's going to be closed then for approximately two to three hours, because it would remain closed until the final racer comes through because they have to have their finish line set up.
Okay, so would you be contacting them by mail or...
Yeah, I mean, I would do, I would contact them by mail or I would try and just knock on the door and be like, hey, look, I'm the director of the 5K, this is what's going on.
I think we got it at 12 houses.
My only suggestion to that would be make sure that you have something in writing for those who aren't home.
Yes, absolutely.
So that you have...
No, I'll, I'll drop, yeah, I'll drop something in writing off, I don't have to go home. I'll probably give it, you know, the people actually...
Hand it to them anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just can't put it in the mailbox.
No, I'll just put it right at the door, so.
And I believe it's the planning and zoning board that you have to speak with to close off those streets, so.
Okay.
That is on the planning commission.
Okay. All right, that'll be the president.
So we'll get that.
Okay, perfect.
If you wouldn't contact them, you can actually contact Mr. Pizarro so that he can get in touch with the board presidents.
I don't know what it is right now.
We'll figure it out.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks for helping me out along the way.
No problem.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate you getting back to us.
Yes.
Any other public comment this evening? It's quiet here tonight. Nobody, okay. Any comments from the clerk's office this evening?
Yes.
Any comments from the council this evening?
I'd like to just make a quick comment, question, and discussion would be to, just thought, we have liaisons, individuals around for all the departments, but the one listening